We acknowledge that this meeting is taking place on the traditional lands of the Ichnaabi. People, the Ichnaabi, include the Odawa, the Ojibwe, and the Badamotrami nations collectively known as the Three Fires Confederacy. We are dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and spirit with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people. He may be seated. Tonight's city council meeting is being held with members of council, the executive management team, the deputy city clerk, and the city clerk in the council chambers. Members of the senior leadership team and other staff are available to answer questions in person and via video conference. We have a couple of the councillors that are also joining us virtually. First item tonight is a confirmation of minutes. The minutes for the city council meeting held on May 2nd, 2022 have been circulated. Are there any corrections? Seeing none, the minutes are adopted as printed. We have one item listed tonight on awards and recognitions, and that's the recognition of the Maple Ridge Secondary School Junior Girls Basketball Team on winning the 2022 Simcoe County Athletic Association and Georgian Bay Secondary School Association Basketball Championships. And I'll go into the podium and I'll continue. Good evening, everyone. The fall brought us on many new and exciting challenges and opportunities for the student athletes at Maple Ridge Secondary School. After starting the season with outdoor tryouts, the junior girls' basketball team was finally assembled and the Ravens took flight. The girls posted a 5-0 regular season record and then stormed through the first three rounds of playoffs, winning the SCAA championship along the way. The highlight of the year was the GBSSA finals, which was the first ever played at Maple Ridge, and the girls capped their undefeated season with a convincing win over a gritty squad from Malmagun. The coaches were extremely proud of the compete level and character of this group of student athletes, which I assume is going to be the first ones to get a banner in the new school's gym, so that's quite an honor. I would now call upon Coach Mike Tuddy to the podium to present the certificates. Mike?
Cameron, please.
And stay down here.
Is there any Duncan? Emily Farr? Abby Glant? Julia Hamilton? Aurora Cruz... Oh, she's not here tonight, sorry. Paige Lipinski? Nancy Omakaro? Emily Osmond? Kendy Schwartz? Scarlett Saret? And finally, Rachel Thieman. And co-coach Michaela Dance and Scott Sealy couldn't be here today either.
Would you like to say a few words or anything?
No, I'm busy.
It's okay.
Somebody wants to, some of them.
Does anybody want to say anything to the behalf of the team? It's okay, you don't have to. I would like to maybe gather for a picture, though. Somebody can... Go on over here and... Actually, you want to go up in there and take a picture? Yeah, maybe you look everybody's face that way. Gather in close, maybe in two rows.
Let's do you four behind. Start, start. How about you guys come behind? Yeah, go ahead. Beck, can you get in?
Okay, it's a little over here. Congratulations, you're in, yeah. That's great, congratulations.
Before you leave, can you just wait for one second? We're just gonna see if any councillors want to say a few words. Sorry, I promised then you can go home. I know you're eager to get to your homework. Councillor McCann?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Ward. I had a brief moment to talk to you, young ladies who did such an amazing accomplishment. You did your city proud, you did your ward proud, if either one of you know what that means. But, you know, brand-new school, all the trials and tribulations of a new school, and I went and reached out and talked to a few of you and asked, like, how did you do it? And you replied to me, the synergies and the chemistry and the fellowship that you have between each other, and most importantly, it's your coaching. And I just wanted to say, I'm 46, having mentors, having proper coaching is so vitally important in building character, and I just want you to savor this moment, right, and take this with you for the rest of your life. You're changed people, and take this character building and this strength building and become better versions of yourself. So I just want to say that, Mike, I've known Mike for... And probably sometimes we both wish we never knew each other, but, you know, but Mike, you know, you're an outstanding individual, you're a great community leader, and you being a humble person, let me just speak on your behalf, I say, your city thanks you, I thank you, and I've got a little token here, if Wendy would be so kind, maybe to pass it on to you, just from me to you, saying thanks for all you do for the community, and next year, we're gonna do it again? Sorry, will you do it again? Thanks, Mike.
Anybody else wish to say anything? Looking around. Councillor Natalie Harris?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ward. I just wanted to say, congratulations again, you know, it's been wonderful to have a lot of young women filling the seats here in City Hall. We haven't seen anyone, and recently we've been having an opportunity to celebrate really amazing young women who are in our city, really being great leaders. So congratulations on obviously supporting each other through this journey and making a great mark on your new school, and all the best in your future. That's great.
Okay, thank you very much, and maybe we'll see you next year. Class dismissed. Okay, we have no reports from officers, we have no deputations on committee reports, I don't think. See the clerk say no. No tax applications. Committee reports. Councillor Kangal, I believe you have the motions.
Yes, thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Thompson. That section A of the Planning Committee report dated May the 3rd, 2022, is circulated to be received. This is related to the applications for the zoning bylaw amendment and draft plan of subdivision 680 Lockhart Road, Phase 2, Ward 9, and application for official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment 338, Mapleview Drive East, Ward 9.
Okay, the motion moved by Councillor Kangal, seconded by Councillor Thompson, that section B of the Planning Committee report dated May 3rd, 2022, is circulated to be adopted. That's the zoning bylaw amendment 953, Mapleview Drive East, Ward 10. Thank you. Moved by Councillor Kangal, seconded by Councillor Thompson, that section B of the Planning Committee report dated May 3rd, 2022, is circulated to be adopted. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Any against? It's carried. Councillor Kangal?
Thank you. Moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Thompson, that section B of the Planning Committee report dated May 3rd, 2022, is circulated to be adopted. This is the report of the Finance and Corporate Services Committee dated April the 26th, 2022, and the report of the City Building Committee dated May the 3rd, 2022.
Moved by Councillor Kangal, seconded by Councillor Thompson, that section A of the General Committee report dated May the 9th, 2022, is circulated to be received. This is the report of the Finance and Corporate Services Committee dated April the 26th, 2022, and the report of the City Building Committee dated May the 3rd, 2022. Moved by Councillor Kangal, seconded by Councillor Thompson, that section A of the General Committee report dated May 9th, 2022, is circulated to be received. Any comments or questions? Seeing none? All in favor? Any against? It's carried. Councillor Kangal?
Thank you. Moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Thompson, that section B of the General Committee report dated May 9th, 2022, is circulated to be adopted. This includes the Investment Management Annual Report, First Quarter Internal Audit Status Report, the Amendments to the Senior's Advisory Committee, Terms of Reference, Nature Berry Bird Friendly Designation, Municipal Heritage Registry, Adding Homes on Cumberland and Rodney Street, Application to Amend the Heritage Building, the Armories Building at 36 Malcaster, the Sandbox Center Report, the Retention of 29 and 35 Spurling Drive, 2021 Annual Procurement Activity Report, 2022 Tax Rates, 2022 Downtown Business Association Levy, and the Invitation to the McLaren Art Centre to Present, which if it passes, we'll let them present later this evening. Any comments or questions? Oops. Councillor Harris?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Ward. Yes, I just had a comment and question regarding, let me just find it here, the Nature Berry Bird Friendly Designation. Thank you so much, Councillor Kangal, for bringing this to our attention. I had a great opportunity to go on a bird walk a couple days ago in my ward and learned a lot, met a lot of the residents that are already enjoying these types of things with Nature Berry. It was wonderful, and I learned a couple things, so I thought I would ask staff, one of the easiest ways that we can protect the birds that are migrating is to turn our lights down in our buildings and elsewhere, so I was wondering if, I'm not sure who I can ask, whether or not we can look into dimming the lights at City Hall and our facilities? I don't know if this is something that's already been investigated.
Not sure who on staff wants to take that. Oh, Rick Pugh is on the line, probably the facilities manager, maybe he can answer.
Thank you. It's true, you Deputy Mayor Ward, to Councillor Harris, we do turn off lights as quickly as we possibly can. The lights in City Hall are not dimmable, but certainly as soon as staff are finished cleaning up, they do turn them off. We encourage people to turn off their lights as soon as they leave their office as well. So, you know, we have, we'll call them the light police, they're very effective, and I would encourage everybody else to chase after regardless of what city facility they're at, to turn off lights when they're not needed, which is helpful.
That's great, a perfect reminder, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions on this section of the report? Okay, then, all in favor? Any against? Seeing none? It's approved. Councillor Kangal?
Thank you. Moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Thompson, that section C of the General Committee report dated May the 9th, 2022, is circulated to be adopted. That's in respect to the Allendale Transit Mobility Hub and Downtown Mini-Hub.
Moved by Councillor Kangal, seconded by Councillor Thompson, that section C of the General Committee report dated May 9th, 2022, is circulated to be adopted. Any comments or questions on this? Seeing none? All in favor? Any against? It's carried. Councillor Kangal?
Thank you. Moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Thompson, that section C of the General Committee report dated May the 9th, 2022, is circulated to be adopted. This is the report of the Finance and Corporate Services Committee dated April the 26th, 2022, and the report of the City Building Committee dated May the 3rd, 2022.
Moved by Councillor Kangal, seconded by Councillor Thompson, that section A of the General Committee report dated May the 9th, 2022, is circulated to be received. Any comments or questions? Seeing none? All in favor? Any against? It's carried. I believe that's all. We will now go on to direct motions. Councillor Harvey?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Ward. I wasn't sure, don't we have to have a vote to bring the direct motion forward before we proceed with it, or are we good to go?
I think it's on the agenda, so no, no, we don't, because it was printed on the agenda in advance.
Okay, fair enough. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Thompson. This is in regard to FedDev funding for sport tourism strategy, resolution to enter into an agreement that the deputy mayor and the city clerk be authorized to execute an agreement with the Federal Economic Development Agency for Southern Ontario, also known as FedDev, for the receiving project funding in the amount of $110,000 in support through the Tourism Relief Fund to complete a sport tourism strategy.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Councillor Harvey, seconded by Councillor Thompson, that the deputy mayor and the city clerk be authorized to execute an agreement with the Federal Economic Development Agency for Southern Ontario for the receiving project funding in the amount of $110,000 in support through the Tourism Relief Fund to complete a sport tourism strategy. Councillor Harvey, would you like to speak to that?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory, obviously, it's funding that's available for things like this sport tourism strategy, and this direct motion is more of a process to enable yourself and the clerk to be able to sign off on the required authorities.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions on this? Seeing none? All in favor? Against? It's carried. The next item on the agenda is presentations. There is one presentation by the McLaren Art Centre concerning an overview of its service and programs. I will now call upon a representative of the McLaren Art Centre to provide the presentation and take this opportunity to welcome Lisa Daniels to Barry. She's been here for a while, but this is her first time appearing before council, and my first time seeing you in real life, because I've seen you virtually a few times. So welcome, and maybe you can introduce who's with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ward and city council members, for the opportunity to speak to you this evening about the McLaren Art Centre. As I've been introduced, that Lisa Daniels, I'm the director and curator of the McLaren, and I started at the McLaren in full-time position in September, and with me is Mike McMillan, the president of the board. We first... Oh, is there a slide? The first slide? How do you want me to...
I know there is a presentation, so maybe just give us a second here, and get it. Yep, it's there.
So should it be a hands-up, or how do you want me to indicate?
Maybe you can just see next slide.
Okay. So first off, I'd like to acknowledge, we would both like to acknowledge and thank the city of Barry for its ongoing support of the McLaren, including the grant we received through the Arts and Culture Investment Fund, the in-kind support through our lease agreement, and the partnerships opportunities with city departments. Next slide, please. Tonight, we would like to share an overview of what we have done and are doing as we emerge from the impacts of the pandemic, and to talk about how we are positioning ourselves for the future. Next slide, please. Last year, city council accepted in principle a review of the cultural grants program. In that report, the consultants recommend that the city explore other models to support the McLaren Art Centre, because, and I quote, "The McLaren is a unique asset providing service to the community in a city facility and is not necessarily comparable to other arts organizations. We are here tonight to ask city council to consider a new working relationship and financial model with the McLaren Art Centre, and we also want to demonstrate how this new relationship will benefit the city and the citizens of Barry economically, socially, and culturally." Next slide, please. In 2021, the McLaren celebrated a milestone, 20 years in the current location, establishing ourselves as a cultural hub in the downtown core, stimulating economic growth, supporting tourism, and helping to build a vibrant, safe, and welcoming downtown. Next slide. Also in 2021, a management consulting firm was brought in to conduct an organizational audit and a cost-benefit analysis of our operations. At the same time, an independent arts professional conducted an audit of our artistic programs. From this work, we know that our future success requires a renewed commitment to these five strategic directions: program excellence, operational effectiveness, dynamic community engagement, innovative partnerships, and a stable funding, financial base. Next slide. Informed by these audits, and in response to the changing social, cultural, and economic environment, we have already started to refocus our energy on programs and activities that will advance our mandate, broaden our impact, and inspire community participation. Specifically, we are focused on amplifying our regional and emerging artists, building stronger strategic partnerships in the community, expanding community access to our permanent collection, and ensuring that our core services are reflective of our changing community, and that our delivery mechanisms facilitate access and inclusion in all neighborhoods across the city. Next slide, please. Over the past two years, the McLaren received a notable increase in requests from educators, human service organizations, and community groups, to work with them to develop and deliver our programs designed to support the increase in mental health challenges that were brought on by the pandemic. Next slide. In response to those requests, we are currently working with a number of seniors organizations to bring art activities out of the gallery and into the homes of isolated seniors. We are working with multiple community organizations to develop innovative and practical ways to reduce barriers and increase access and inclusion, both in the gallery and in sites across the community. We are also developing a community-based art, health, and wellness program that we're really excited to launch later this year. Next slide, please. Guided by the organizational audit and cost-benefit analysis, we have implemented a number of initiatives to focus our operations and diversify our revenue streams as we work to stabilize our financial base. We have reduced our overall budget by 25%. That's from the 2019 budget, which was our last sort of normal year, and our 2022 budget. We have reduced our FTE count by four. We are laying the groundwork to expand our facility and event booking opportunities. We are actively exploring viable alternatives to the cafe and the gift shop, and we are expanding our education and community art programs. Next slide, please. And lastly, we are actively working to stabilize our funding framework, to evenly distribute revenues between the three levels of government, our self-generated revenue initiatives, and fundraising and sponsorship. Next slide, please. In doing this work, we conducted a quick comparative scan of four regional galleries of a similar size, in terms of budget and square feet, that operate in similar-sized communities and have similar partnership arrangements with their municipalities. These galleries all operate out of a city facility, and each municipality provides additional service support. After those contributions are taken into account and removed from the equation, the average annual grant given by the municipality for general operating costs is in the range of 25% of the gallery's budget. We are asking that the city consider shifting from our current model to a service provider model, and then we are also asking that the city take steps to bring our annual operating grant in line with the industry standard to within the range of 20% of our budget, which based on our 2022 budget, which is just under 1.4 million, would represent an increase to our current city operating funding of about $122,600. I'd like to take a few moments and share some of what I think are the tangible ways that a new working relationship like this will directly benefit the city and the citizens of Barry. Next slide, please. This slide represents the actual economic impact of an exhibition that I mounted a few years ago, pre-pandemic, in a slightly smaller community than Barry in southwestern Ontario. This particular exhibition would be considered a blockbuster or a major exhibition, and realistically, we could not mount an exhibition of this caliber every year. But if we consider the critical mass of mounting between nine and 12 exhibitions a year, which we do currently, and take into account all the ancillary programming, the events, and the activities that are built around each of these exhibitions, I think we can extrapolate that the annual economic impact of the McLaren operation is significant to the community. Next slide, please. To that end, starting in 2023, we will collect the data necessary to provide a true picture of the economic impact of the McLaren operations over the course of a full, hopefully, normal year. Next slide, please. We are committed to working with our downtown neighbors to find new and creative ways to bring people into the downtown core, whether it's piloting a projection-based program like Wintertide in 2021, or supporting BIA initiatives like Open Air Dunlop. Next slide. We are currently working with downtown partners to present a monthly First Friday Art Crawl. This is a social event that brings people into the downtown core to experience and celebrate the city's art, music, and food scene, while supporting our local artists and local businesses. Next slide, please. Next year, it's my understanding that the city cultural services and the McLaren are embarking on strategic planning processes. This provides the perfect opportunity for us to align our priorities where feasible, and to work together to leverage our collective skills and resources in the delivery of art and cultural activities for the city of Barry. By aligning our efforts at a more strategic and foundational level, the impact of both our programs and initiatives will increase significantly. For example, there is an opportunity to partner more effectively on citywide projects like Culture Days, other community festivals, and on programming of public spaces throughout the city, whether that's Meridian Place, or community centers, or public parks. Next slide, please. Working together, the McLaren can build meaningful programs around city projects, like for example, the mural art program. For example, developing a responsible graffiti project for youth that brings together artists, businesses, law enforcement, responsible graffiti, and other city departments. Next slide, please. While the last two years have been challenging for everyone, they have also provided the space to reimagine and reaffirm our role in community. It is clear to us that our relationship with the city of Barry is a key component of moving forward in a meaningful and impactful way. Next slide. We are eager to work with the city in new ways, to be a better partner, and together find ways to integrate and leverage our resources, our talents, and align our...
I would like to share an overview of what we have done and are doing as we emerge from the impacts of the pandemic and to talk about how we are positioning ourselves for the future. Next slide, please. Last year, city council accepted in principle a review of the cultural grants program. In that report, the consultants recommend that the city explore other models to support the McLaren Art Center because, and I quote, "The McLaren is a unique asset providing service to the community in a city facility and is not necessarily comparable to other arts organizations." We are here tonight to ask city council to consider a new working relationship and financial model with the McLaren Art Center. And we also want to demonstrate how this new relationship will benefit the city and the citizens of Barry economically, socially, and culturally. Next slide, please. In 2021, the McLaren celebrated a milestone, 20 years in the current location, establishing ourselves as a cultural hub in the downtown core, stimulating economic growth, supporting tourism, and helping to build a vibrant, safe, and welcoming downtown. Next slide. Also in 2021, a management consulting firm was brought in to conduct an organizational audit and a cost-benefit analysis of our operations. At the same time, an independent arts professional conducted an audit of our artistic programs. From this work, we know that our future success requires a renewed commitment to these five strategic directions: program excellence, operational effectiveness, dynamic community engagement, innovative partnerships, and a stable funding, financial base. Next slide. Informed by these audits and in response to the changing social, cultural, and economic environment, we have already started to refocus our energy on programs and activities that will advance our mandate, broaden our impact, and inspire community participation. Next slide, please. Specifically, we are focused on amplifying our regional and emerging artists, building stronger strategic partnerships in the community, expanding community access to our permanent collection, and ensuring that our core services are reflective of our changing community and that our delivery mechanisms facilitate access and inclusion in all neighborhoods across the city. Next slide, please. Over the past two years, the McLaren received a notable increase in requests from educators, human service organizations, and community groups to work with them to develop and deliver our programs designed to support the increase in mental health challenges that were brought on by the pandemic. Next slide. In response to those requests, we are currently working with a number of seniors organizations to bring art activities out of the gallery and into the homes of isolated seniors. We are working with multiple community organizations to develop innovative and practical ways to reduce barriers and increase access and inclusion, both in the gallery and in sites across the community. We are also developing a community-based art, health, and wellness program that we're really excited to hope to launch later this year. Next slide, please. Guided by the organizational audit and cost-benefit analysis, we have implemented a number of initiatives to focus our operations and diversify our revenue streams as we work to stabilize our financial base. We have reduced our overall budget by 25%. That's from the 2019 budget, which was our last sort of normal year, and our 2022 budget. We have reduced our FTE count by four. We are laying the groundwork to expand our facility and event booking opportunities. We are actively exploring viable alternatives to the café and the gift shop, and we are expanding our education and community art programs. Next slide, please. And lastly, we are actively working to stabilize our funding framework, to evenly distribute revenues between the three levels of government, our self-generated revenue initiatives, and fundraising and sponsorship. Next slide, please. In doing this work, we conducted a quick comparative scan of four regional galleries of a similar size in terms of budget and square feet that operate in similar-sized communities and have similar partnership arrangements with their municipalities. These galleries all operate out of a city facility, and each municipality provides additional service support. After those contributions are taken into account and removed from the equation, the average annual grant given by the municipality for general operating costs is in the range of 25% of the gallery's budget. We are asking that the city consider shifting from our current model to a service provider model. And then we are also asking that the city take steps to bring our annual operating grant in line with the industry standard to within the range of 20% of our budget, which based on our 2022 budget, which is just under 1.4 million, would represent an increase to our current city operating funding of about $122,600. I'd like to take a few moments and share some of what I think are the tangible ways that a new working relationship like this will directly benefit the city and the citizens of Barry. Next slide, please. This slide represents the actual economic impact of an exhibition that I mounted a few years ago, pre-pandemic, in a slightly smaller community than Barry in southwestern Ontario. This particular exhibition would be considered a blockbuster or a major exhibition, and realistically, we could not mount an exhibition of this caliber every year. But if we consider the critical mass of mounting between nine and 12 exhibitions a year, which we do currently, and take into account all the ancillary programming, the events, and the activities that are built around each of these exhibitions, I think we can extrapolate that the annual economic impact of the McLaren operation is significant to the community. Next slide, please. To that end, starting in 2023, we will collect the data necessary to provide a true picture of the economic impact of the McLaren operations over the course of a full, hopefully, normal year. Next slide, please. We are committed to working with our downtown neighbors to find new and creative ways to bring people into the downtown core, whether it's piloting a projection-based program like Winter Tide in 2021 or supporting BIA initiatives like Open Air Dunlop. Next slide. We are currently working with downtown partners to present a monthly First Friday Art Crawl. This is a social event that brings people into the downtown core to experience and celebrate the city's art, music, and food scene while supporting our local artists and local businesses. Next slide, please. Next year, it's my understanding that the city cultural services and the McLaren are embarking on strategic planning processes. This provides the perfect opportunity for us to align our priorities where feasible and to work together to leverage our collective skills and resources in the delivery of art and cultural activities for the city of Barry. By aligning our efforts at a more strategic and foundational level, the impact of both our programs and initiatives will increase significantly. For example, there is an opportunity to partner more effectively on citywide projects like Culture Days, other community festivals, and on programming of public spaces throughout the city, whether that's Meridian Place, or community centers, or public parks. Next slide, please. Working together, the McLaren can build meaningful programs around city projects, like, for example, the mural art program. For example, developing a responsible graffiti project for youth that brings together artists, businesses, law enforcement, responsible graffiti, and other city departments. Next slide, please. While the last two years have been challenging for everyone, they have also provided the space to reimagine and reaffirm our role in community. It is clear to us that our relationship with the city of Barry is a key component of moving forward in a meaningful and impactful way. Next slide. We are eager to work with the city in new ways, to be a better partner, and together find ways to integrate and leverage our resources, our talents, and align our strategic directions. Our shared goal is to build a vibrant, healthy, innovative, creative, economically strong community. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Daniels. I will now ask, you can raise the podium, I'll ask for questions or comments from councillors. Councillor Thompson, and then, oh, or maybe I'll start with councillor Jim Harris since he's the city rep on, so I'll go to him first if that's okay.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Ward. Yeah, and thank you, I think I saw councillor Thompson and councillor Kungle, so I'm excited about your interest. So, thank you. Yes, as the board, pardon me, as the council member on the board, I really appreciate all that's been done. Lisa, welcome to Barry, and it's so great to have you on board. And Michael, as the chair, you've been phenomenal as a board chair, so thank you. It's incredible how much you've given and put into the McLaren over this past two years and how well you've been able to shape the organization to move towards the future. I mean, just hearing this presentation, hopefully people are inspired. I mean, working with seniors and youth and children, businesses, police, the city, the partnerships are just incredible. And it's exciting to see the art really moving beyond the doors of the McLaren into the community, and the community being welcomed into the McLaren, so it's, the future sounds really exciting. It's been a dark two years for the McLaren, but that was just no question here, that got to be a question at some point. But, you know, I just, so thank you for shaping the vision. I really think it's a, it's a great presentation. And this may be, may be a question, I know obviously there's division for council in the future, you know, when you see the support that's provided by the city in the ask, I mean, it's a very, it seems like a very fair ask based on the, you know, the economics, the comparables, you know, from your experience, Lisa, in other areas, I mean, how has that enabled the organization to do its primary mandate? I mean, you're not worried about chasing dollars and chasing fundraisers. How has that really enabled the function of the art center to really flourish outside of all that other expectation?
Thank you for the question, councillor Harris. Anytime that you have a stable base to work from, more things are possible. You're able to be more creative, you're able to take more risks, which prompts more initiative and engagement in community. And you're also able to provide programs that maybe are cheaper, more accessible, that possibly even some free programs to members of the community to encourage that accessibility. I think, you know, if we have the stable funding base from these three areas that I mentioned, anything over and above that becomes a, an opportunity to build and to grow and to have more impact. I think it just, you know, provides that stability and that reassurance and that, that stress-free kind of situation to be able to really build and deliver on your programs. It also helps in recruitment and in retention of staff. And that's a big and important aspect of, of working in the arts is to, you know, really build that team that can not only work together amongst themselves, but then also really engage with community and get to know community, and that takes time. And so we really want to recruit high-level performers, but also people that can engage and connect with our community.
Great, thank you. Maybe just one last comment and follow-up. I know this council has really learned a lot over the last while. I know councillor Harvey is very interested in sport tourism, what it brings in economic development or gain to the city, and we've learned from the Performing Arts Center Task Force, again, how much that brings to the city. And thank you for allowing us to be aware of how much an art center brings to the community as well as the, all the social, and the cultural, but the economic benefits. So, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Thompson, I wasn't sure if you wanted to speak.
Thanks through you, Mayor, Acting Mayor Ward. Thank you for the presentation and welcome to Barry. I was wondering if you could maybe help me, and there wasn't in your presentation of your annual fundraising and philanthropy and all that that goes on, obviously has been hindered by the pandemic and stuff. And sorry to put you on the spot, I was wondering if you had some numbers of like 2018, 19, regular years, and then to where they are in 2020, 2021?
Sure. I don't have it far back as 2018, but we, overall, when you consider all the fundraising, which includes membership, benefactor, that type of activity to the major galas and art auctions and that type of thing, 2019, we were in the range of 790,000 when all of that was pooled together, 2020, 575,000, 2021, 450,000. So, basically took about a 40% hit in our fundraising, which is actually not that bad. I mean, there's a lot of, it tells me there's a lot of support in our community. I know a lot of other galleries have been hit even harder, so that's a good on Barry and, and I think good on the McLaren. You know, we were unable to offer some of our key fundraising events, like the galas and, and the art auction went to online, but it only raised half of what it normally would because that excitement of being together in the space wasn't there.
Perfect. And just a follow-up, so, just so I, I think I have my math correct here, you've reduced the budget 25% for this year based on the 1.825 on your total budget, so about 456,000?
Yes.
So, bringing you down to about 1.4. Would you say with the, I don't want to say the pandemic's over, but we're starting to move into people gathering and stuff like that, do you feel that the support to reach the 790 is still there? Like, you know, the one thing that makes the McLaren such a great place is the philanthropy in this community. It's been 20 years of very minimal municipal back funding that's, you know, we have some people who love the arts and the McLaren, and it's, but do you feel that the support from, you know, the donors and stuff like that are there to achieve the 790 back in, you know, 2019?
It's a good question. I think, I think the community has changed over the two years. There's been a lot of coming in and leaving in the community, and so it shifts the landscape. So, I think this winter, the board embarked on a, conducting an environmental scan to see, to understand the current fundraising landscape across the community. And from that, we are in the process now of updating and reconfiguring our sponsorship opportunities, developing a plan, getting the staff fundraising ready. We are currently have posted a, and recruiting a development officer to embark on that. So, do I think the money is still there? I, I think it is. I think it'll be different. I think it'll be different configurations. I think it'll be a combination of stewarding and re-engaging with donors and sponsors and that may have drifted through, through the shutdowns and every, and the layoffs and that type of thing. And a new cultivation plan needs to be put in place. The general consensus within the sector is that it'll be about a three-year process of getting us, of getting the organization back to some sort of normalcy, is that a word? Normalcy, normalcy, outside of the pandemic. So, we are putting in the steps to do just that, to ramp that up and, and to sort of, again, find that stable base within the, within our budgets.
And just a...
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, councillor Thompson, I just wanted to chime in on that as well. So, I'm a donor sergeant, my, the company I represent is a donor to the gallery and has been for some time. And I just wanted to say, because I've seen the organization through, through, from Carolyn, our, Lisa's predecessor, the status quo, while, while we made it work, really wasn't working, and Carolyn would have, would, I believe, actually, we spoke in 2019 to council about exactly that. What you end up with when, when you rely on fundraising for core funding is that your staff kind of churns through, goes from event to event to event, and a lot of your staff time and your sort of, your attention and everything else is just all tied up in fundraising. And because we're appealing, we're appealing to certain types of donors to, to try and generate these, this income on a steady basis, then you start getting this reputation as sort of an elitist organization because, you know, we're constantly, you know, at the end of the day, if you go to our, we've got some, some events going on right now, we've got some activities at the gallery. The activities themselves are, are, you know, citizens of Barry are attending these, they're benefiting from the programming, but so much of our attention is being spent on, on just kind of churning out these, these fundraisers, we call them, because the fund, they're fairly inefficient. I mean, we're putting out a lot of effort and a lot of, to get little returns that we can kind of keep our programming going. And so what we're kind of looking to do is to raise all tides. The fundraising will continue, but it'll be, as Lisa pointed out, it'll be to kind of push us forward, but we really need that stable base just to get us, our heads above water as a, as a starting point. And then, does that, is that a fulsome answer?
I actually really appreciate that answer. And, and yeah, I want to commend you on the organization too. You guys have made some tough decisions, and, you know, it's, sometimes it's hard to make those where, you know, you've cut back on staff, you've looked at some of the other things, so I do appreciate that, you know. And, and to look at it in a, in a full wholesome way of having not just a certain group input where it's a community and not just one, you know, kind of fundraising. Now, in one of the, the last question, one of the slides, I was just trying to pull it up, and Lisa, you spoke more, kind of on a inclusive with the city, like, almost like just a, a division of the city and not as a, you know, at arm's length where we provide the facility and stuff, but almost like another department of the city. Is that, was I hearing that kind of correctly?
Not exactly. What we are interested in exploring is the concept of a service provider, so not a department, but how can, how can we enhance the services of the city and how by partnering with the city and in those events or activities or initiatives where it makes, where it aligns with the McLaren's mandate and aligns with the city culture mandate, how can we have some synergy there and work together to elevate those activities and events? So, so I wouldn't call it a department of the city, but we are, we are in partnership with the city to provide some of these core services into the, where, where it makes sense, where it makes, from our mandates.
Perfect. I appreciate, yeah, it was, I'm a little bit nervous when an art gallery becomes a department because I, I think it actually takes away from the artistic side where you've got to toe certain lines and, you know, sometimes, you know, art galleries need to be a little risque, and that doesn't always fly in municipal government.
I know.
You need that attraction and stuff. But I appreciate your presentation and, you know, the approach you're taking and not burdening the next council with a full ask, but a wholesome look at the whole, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Councillor Kungle, did you have questions?
I do, thank you. I have a few. I'm digesting all that really great information. Thank you, councillor Thompson. And maybe if I could follow up on the conversation around the budget and potential future ask. And if I heard you right, Mr. McMillan, was it around fundraising is one piece, but, you know, there is kind of this viability aspect. And so, is the intention or aim to kind of move, I believe, Ms. Daniels, you talked a bit about being, I believe the slide was 7.5%, wanting to move to about 20% of your budget, which would be approximately $122,000, $123,000.
Additional dollars.
Additional dollars to your budget. And so, is there kind of a Plan A versus a Plan B around, wouldn't it be great if we had what I'll call base funding, which is an add-on you can count on year-over-year that is gifted, or are you looking at a bridge over a couple of years while you look at other strategies to become whole or to look at fundraising? So, is there, you know, is your ask kind of one-time amount of money that you're hoping for in the next fiscal that we should appreciate? Or if, if you don't get that full base amount that's guaranteed ongoing, do you have a strategy that you're looking at over the next three to five years around managing the, the amount that you're looking for?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, the ask is not a one-time ask, the ask would be an ongoing ask in conjunction with the service provider kind of relationships. So, they kind of go together in, in my mind and in, in the conversations I've had. And again, it's, it's that, that stable funding. And we are working in each of those areas to, as, as Mike mentioned, it was a little bit in crisis and lopsided and, and sort of scurrying around to, you know, pull money in through this gallery or that event, and, and it was taking a lot of the focus away from our core mandate and the delivery of why we're there. So, by, by refocusing each of these components, the, the government funding, the fundraising, and then our own self-generated revenue, we actually are working on three strategies within one strategy, three, three tracks within one strategy to bring all of those elements into a, a stable financial kind of base and then build from there. So, as far as the Plan B goes, we'll just keep working at it. I think we've got a good plan in place, you know, you, whenever you're working with sort of variables, you respond to the variables. Next year, we're going into, as I mentioned, the strategic, the next round of strategic planning to sort of orient ourselves and, and understand how we will be in community in a more solid way, and I think out of that will, will probably come even more understanding of that, how to, how to firm up our, our financial base across the board. Does that answer your question?
It does. That's helpful, thank you. I have, I have another question on programming. So, I do, I'm in tune with community agencies and of course, you know, I'm familiar with several that I think 40% of budgets are dependent on fundraising. And often in these dynamic conversations around, how do we tap into each other around having joint initiatives because even fund development comes at a cost, I run investing, investing in that person and then getting the return through donations? So, I didn't know if you were looking at opportunities or if you have new partnerships on the horizon that you're exploring that would be good for us to appreciate. The programming by far, I think, is exceptional. I'm seeing the McLaren out in the community with you, I think you're hosting a free day for, for teachers, you actually have free programming, which I think, when I share what the McLaren is doing, is new information that maybe that there is this assumption that to be part of an art gallery and the art center, that it does come at a membership cost. And so I think you're doing a great job at communicating. And I would even say, believe you're even doing a youth volunteer hours. And so, I think this package that you've provided us as well this evening helps us to help promote how you are accessible and available, both with, you know, no-cost programming. But I was wondering about, are there opportunities to bring art into other agencies and have joint fundraisers that bring in other donors? For instance, the beautiful approach of coming to the art gallery I've seen in other communities where you have artists or even community members tied to an agency that are painting soup bowls. You auction off those bowls, and then you actually have dinner together, and that, there's that connectedness and community that you've done such a beautiful, beautiful job building. So, I'm wondering about, as you move forward, are, are you looking at partnering to kind of tap into volunteers, donors, that might be committed to another agency, but you're building a joint interest in the McLaren?
Yes. Thank you for the question. And I'm not a great person remembering titles. And I'm not a great person remembering titles, especially, we have just embarked, one of the, one of the partnerships that came our way this winter was with the Simco Geriatric.
Specialized geriatric services.
Thank you. That's the one I can never, and there's not even an easy acronym for that one to trigger a memory. And that partnership was so successful that they approached us to be joint grant writers and do another, another sort of iteration to hopefully build a longer-term relationship with them. And I would imagine what you're talking about in terms of joint, I mean, part of our, what we offered was training to the personal care workers in the gallery as well, so that not just supporting the service to their clients, but actually also working with their staff to, to be able to deliver some of these programs in the, in the homes and, and community centers. I could imagine that kind of relationship growing. We're actually in a, in the beginning of a project with our current exhibition, Francisco Fernando Granados is going to be working with, oh gosh, sorry, the immigrant, immigrant services, new immigrant, what's the type, the new immigrant services? And one other, sorry, it's totally lost, left my mind, but there are two other organizations. One is actually part of Parks and Recreation and the Immigrant Services, where they're actually coming to a talk on Thursday with the artist. And we're looking at running programs with them and then not only in the gallery, but then taking it out into the community, into their organizations and developing programs together. And what you're talking about in terms of those kinds of initiatives, I think, will fall out of that. We've also done things with Communities in Bloom in the past, where we've done wonderful, you know, you know, Communities in Bloom often do tours of gardens and we would place artists in those gardens doing plein air painting or, or invite florists to do an interpretation of a painting through, through their flowers and auction those off and partner with Communities in Bloom or, you know, we've done Movember things. So yes, I absolutely see that happening as, as we roll through these next three years and really solidify those partnerships.
And last question, if I may. So I sit on Communities in Bloom, great, and I'll reach out, but also on the seniors' advisory council. And so I can't help but think about when we bridge the programming. And so we often talk about Thursdays as free transit for seniors, and we're also trying to enhance transit ridership. And how do we create destinations for individuals rather than errands, too, on those days? And so I'd love to explore even the opportunity, if you're open to it, to be presenting at the seniors' advisory committee and/or exploring. Seniors Month comes up in June and we will be at three different locations. It would be great to amplify what is available or how the McLaren has been connected from a seniors' focus and help supporting the visibility of the programming that you've been doing. So if that's of interest, I'll frame in a question. Are you interested? And if you are, let me know.
Very interested. And in fact, our new community arts coordinator has a background and has a history working with seniors and Alzheimer's through the arts. And she is very much looking at, we're actually working on our fall programs right now and looking at developing a seniors' focus series of programs that would sound perfect. So perfect timing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Kungal. Councilor Morales?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Could staff put up the presentation with the numbers, from the operating numbers? Page 12. Is there a reason you presented these numbers this way? Any specific reason? And what I mean is in relation to the municipal operating that we cover to the total budget?
I wanted to show what, after the cost of the facility and other soft services that the municipalities provide to these galleries, what they then offer or provide the individual galleries to in terms of general operating budgets through their grant, through the municipal grant program.
Okay. And the reason I bring that up is, these numbers are a little bit misleading for the following reasons. So you had said that you, that the budget from this number was cut by 25%. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that amounts to a reduction of 400 and change. I did the calculation earlier. So when that would have been, I personally would appreciate just to have that up there, and this is why. When you, when you're able, when we're able to see, when I'm able to see that it goes from $1,825,000 and then you, down about $400,000, that number of percentage of budget, the number you presented to us, the number that's appealing to our minds, it's not actually 7.5%. It's 10% on the dot, 10.001. So currently speaking, and I know it's a different year, it's post-COVID, and by the way, I commend you for the retooling. As Councilor Thompson said, reinventing yourself as staff is not easy. What you've done with the lighting programs in the winter is incredible. I know the BIA is grateful for a lot of the initiatives as well. So I will get to like the complementing. But these numbers, again, something stuck with me, I'm like, that seven isn't accurate. It's actually 10 right now. In addition to that, you have in the fine print, average municipal operating grant is 25.3. That's an average. If you do the median, it's much lower. And that's because Peterborough throws off the entire, the average is just not, is not a preferable number to use, because when you're having a 54, that's not a comparator to everyone else, it increases the average. So that's why I started with a question, like, was there a reason you presented it that way? In addition to, so I guess my question is this, I'm looking at information about the Sandbox. So they're another kind of organization that's providing a service that benefits city or barry residents, very important, just like the arts, not quite a formal service partner, even though there's a formal capital lease extension. And I have a media article that's reporting that they are subsidized at 7% of their operating. And I believe, I guess I'll ask Ms. Mission Leader, sir, how much do we subsidize of the Sandbox of the operating at the current moment?
Through you, Deputy Mayor Ward, to Councilor Morales, council tonight actually ratified the annual funding that contributes to their operating at $35,000. That doesn't consider the facility itself.
At $35,000, how much percentage, how much is that as a percentage?
Through you, Councilor Morales, the last information that I have on their, their operating budget was provided in late 2021. And I think their estimate for 2022 was around $600,000. So I think that puts it in that 6% range. But again, those numbers are not validated or current.
Perfect. No, I appreciate that. So the other question was, and again, I really actually like Councilor Thompson's questions a lot in terms of fundraising. I think, my personal opinion and observation is that appealing to the philanthrop, to the target audience that is in philanthropy is very, is a good strength that something like a public art or gallery has. And I heard you say that if, if we lowered the amount of energy that staff spend on fundraising, it allows you guys to retain staff better and focus on the programming. But I do want to like obviously point out the fact that Barry Public Library has fundraising and development officer, the BIA has fundraising and specifically for capital projects, but even for operating projects, ongoing and in the last that I know, six years. The RVH has fundraising arms. And I previously haven't heard that it was too problematic. They're focusing too much on paying the bills than the operating, they're able to make it work. I'm extremely impressed that, how you've been able to pivot the operations. You know, the slides before slide 12, they speak for themselves, not only the pictures, but how you've been able to engage a broader audience that would have just assumed galleries were, you know, a pre-pandemic thing and there was just no point in reaching out. So is it possible for you to maybe reach out to the organization I've listed and maybe learn from them? What worked from them with the development officer, what doesn't work? What contracts were great? What contracts were problematic? And maybe right-size your fundraising efforts to bring in the money and allow staff to also deliver the services?
Yeah. Thank you for the question. And yes, as we're doing an environmental scan and retooling what our fundraising is going to be, we're mostly looking at other art galleries in similar-sized organizations because the regional public art gallery is, is a operation that is very unique. We manage and care for Canadian cultural property, our art collection. We have up to 12 touring exhibitions that we do every year and then the programming around it. I'm not terribly familiar with, we are partnering with Sandbox. They're very interested in the First Friday initiative and they're working, we're working together with them and, and learning about them. I'm not, we're actually going to be doing one of these exchange projects with them that I mentioned with, with one of our artists that are doing the, currently at the gallery. We'll be mounting some work at the Sandbox. So we are doing partnerships. I am familiar with them. I'm also aware that they're very different. They are fundamentally different organizations and operations. That doesn't mean we can't learn from each other and that we can't reach out and look at possible synergy. Like, this is part of what the First Friday idea was, was to bring together these organizations to look at, how can we, how can we collaborate? How can we learn from each other? How can we lift each other up and, and bring together these initiatives? In terms of, of learning from fundraising, as I said, we are recruiting a development officer. We've been very successful with our fundraising. But, but what I think Mike was referring to was, it was getting to the point where fundraising was taking over as the primary activity of the McLaren. And that kind of skewed a lot of the other programming and initiatives and opportunities that, that we weren't able to leverage or to pilot because of that, that imbalance. So our goal is to balance it out, not to omit it, to focus on fundraisers that actually have a large enough return. And I think there is a difference. Mike called it a friendraiser. There's opportunities where the focus is more about cultivation and stewarding and raising engagement. And then there are fundraisers. For example, Bingo, McLaren Bingo brings in almost half a million dollars a year. Major, major fundraiser for us. And that's the focus, right? And it's, so we're looking at, what are the initiatives that we can do that will bring in the most net revenue through our fundraising activities? And what are the fundraising activities that are friendraising activities? Still very important to do, social events, cultural events, but, but kind of a different focus, so.
Okay. Okay. So yeah, my question was focused around the second point of that, so fundraising. I am not thinking like reach out to Sandbox on how to run art. That's more operations, but it would be more about learning about their, different people's experiences with fundraising, friendraising, bringing the money. The facility itself, obviously COVID is a different time. I just clarified with staff that we do own the building.
Yes.
Just the way the city owns a building, where the Sandbox is, just the way the city owns a building, where the library is. So just establishing that pattern here. Do you have a plan in your, in your, in your docket about leveraging the, the marketing value of that building for more weddings, more events, and more ability to bring in money? And the reason I ask that is, maybe it's my personal opinion, but I hear a lot that like the facility you guys have is an incredible facility. Beyond the programming that you do, it's a great aesthetic facility, it's a great place to have a wedding, it's a great place to have a retirement. And again, my personal opinion, it's, those things are decently compatible to have when you guys are not doing programming that doesn't take away from what you do and what you stand for, and it still allows the money to come in. So again, based on this presentation and kind of ask down the road, I'm wondering how vital, using it as an event space, as a South Shore Center, as a country club, if you will, to further move the McLaren Art Center towards sustainability, but also growth?
Yeah. Thank you for the question. So two points on that. Our weddings are booked right up to 2023. All the weekends that we're able to, to offer weddings, I think it's a bit of, all those cancellations, people are booking and deposits paid. And again, it's about how many weddings can we handle over the year that don't, like trying to find a night for our gala was almost impossible unless it was in the deeps of February because of how many weddings there were. The other point, and I mentioned this in the presentation, is we are looking at other ways, what kind of retrofitting, and by that I mean more technology, like present, board meeting spaces, small rooms or spaces where we can offer more meeting spaces for, and that's one of the things that we're seeing happening is more and more people staying at home, working from home, businesses not going back into their big buildings, but bringing together their teams to, for a full-day meeting somewhere, you know, every quarter or twice a year. And we would love to be able to have the McLaren, have spaces in the McLaren where a meeting like that could happen and we could weave in, you know, art activities, team building. So we're all looking at those things.
So it's scheduled till 2023. That's, that's great to hear.
Yeah.
And then finally, I actually personally, at this, at this point, I don't have a, I don't really have any objection to making you guys a service, a formal service partner. I'm not saying yes, but I don't, it's not like, don't let my negative tone with the numbers make you assume that I'm against that. I see a case for that. I am troubled about the way the numbers were presented. I'm troubled about the way the average versus the median and Peterborough skews it. However, I think it's a good opportunity for me to later get clarification.
Yes.
Maybe get Kingston, get a couple of other municipalities. And then also get a better idea on how, right? I heard the what, and the what is, we want more money. We want a double, a doubling, well, if it's the numbers you used, it's a tripling, but in reality, it's a doubling of the municipal operating and we want it stabilized and formalized. So I heard the what. And I think I'm hearing more of the why, the weddings. Something else that I heard, and this is, I don't think this was in your presentation, you guys actually have a loan program where you lend people a work of art or, and then people can take it home for a period of time and it's through donations. And that's really great. So I do know a lot of the great work you guys are doing and I'm very impressed at how, you know, people just think our gallery is old school, you guys don't innovate, but you guys truly are. So I think there's a good opportunity to find that happy balance while also acknowledging the fact that if we have comparable numbers with other, at arm's length organizations such as the Sandbox, we have to either stay within range or really provide the business case and the community case for those.
Yeah. Thank you. And I agree. And just to clarify, these 2019, this was a, a very quick comparative study that I did myself last year for a particular reason. And it's very, there's not a lot of gallery, like for example, Kingston, that's a university gallery. That's a whole, it's not comparable at all because of the way it's funded. The reason I put the stars beside Guelph is because I wasn't, and, and that particular number came out of a comparative study from, that the City of St. Catherine's did last, last fall as well, for the similar reason, looking at Rodman Hall and how they were going to support Rodman Hall as it transitions out of the university to, they're hoping to be a municipal, sort of similar kind of relationship. What I'm not, what I wasn't able to, to clarify with Guelph was, I know that, for example, they have three partners. The building itself, I'm not sure if it's a university or the municipality or the, the school board. They have three equal partners. So each of these have very different, similar but very different kind of relationships that need to be taken into consideration. And I'm happy to redo the numbers for you. The reason I chose 2019 was because that was the last solid, kind of consistent year for all these galleries. And I would even say 2022 would be a little skewed in terms of trying to find that, that median or that, that average, because, you know, there's still additional funds being topped up by different funding agencies that we won't be seeing next year. But I hear what you're saying and I will definitely maybe consult with you about how to, how to actually present it in, in a way that really provides you with the numbers that, that reflect.
I've taken a lot of airtime, but I want to ask a very quick question. And I don't, I I only, I need a very quick answer. Is there any plans to apply for federal money out there? There's lots of, for example, I'll give you an example. The Downtown Barry BIA has been able to get hundreds of thousands of dollars back through grant applications, things that activate Main Street, things that brings people back to downtowns and creates a realm of community, community, public realm. And that's not just business. That includes arts, as we all know. So is there a plan? And if there's not, that's okay. Could there be a plan where your organization, your board makes it a priority? And maybe if you guys need advice on how to apply, I'm sure Invest Barry within, within Reason can, can assist. The Sandbox might be able to assist with grant writing. Is that part of your development strategy? Just because, at least for the next 18 months, likely, we're not in the, we're not at a point where you just apply for a grant and you get 10,000. So you have to like reason, how much is our time worth? The ability of money that you can get can be in the six figures.
Yes. Thank you. And yes, we apply for grants all the time. So we have the, we have the federal, provincial, and municipal operating grants that are annual and are, are, we continually apply for. On top of that, through the pandemic, we received, and, and I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, I can provide them for you by the end of the week, if you like. On, through the Trillium Foundation, for example, even since, since this year, we have received, what, 1, 250,000 through Trillium specifically for rebuilding. So, and, and it is still a specialized program for rebuilding coming out of the pandemic. For example, it's through that money that we're able to do the,
IT infrastructure.
The IT infrastructure to look at how we can, what we need to do to be able to afford, or not afford, but provide that additional boardroom space for, for meetings and stuff. So, so yes, we've brought in, we apply for all that money, all the time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Morales. Counsel Reetma.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. And I, I very much appreciate your, your presentation. I guess there's one question that I had that you just mentioned in passing that you were rethinking your cafe and your gift shop. Can you tell us a little bit about what you're thinking there?
I'm sure. So as, as I mentioned, there was a cost-benefit analysis of all our retail revenue generating operations, and that was an independent management firm in Barry did that for us. The board brought them in last summer before I was even hired. And what we found was those operations were not generating revenue, that they were no longer viable. And so we did try to open the cafe, for example, twice over the pandemic to ramp it back up, and both times it was just not sustainable. There were not enough people downtown, there were additional closings, that type of thing. So what we're looking at now, and, and again, we don't want to make any permanent decisions at this point because we want to have the conversation with the community. We recognize the import, the social importance of the cafe, if not the revenue importance. And so right now, to fill this sort of gap, as we're, we're looking at other alternatives, we're, we're considering an independent business to maybe consider setting up a satellite cafe in the space. We're looking at, so that's really what we're, we're hoping to be able to, to negotiate, to sort of carry us through the, the consultation time, the decision-making time, what would need to happen in the building to be able to do that, and what the community wants. So yeah, we're in this kind of in-between time right now as it relates to the cafe, but we definitely recognize the social importance of that, bringing people together and, and socializing around the McLaren.
I think, I appreciate that because I, I do think the, the gallery has a real social function in the city, and as our city grows and as it changes, I think your role is going to grow and it's going to change. And I think it's a really, really important role that you have. And I think the real question starts to become, how do you, how do you exercise that role, if you will? And I'm, I'm very much looking forward to you presenting a business case because I, I think that around this table, when we are looking at operations such as yours and the asks that you're having, I think we need to be satisfied that it is a solid business case so that we can spend our money wisely and that we can support you in, in the ways that you need to be supported. I just want to just clarify one last thing. When you're talking about being, becoming a service partner, you're, you're thinking along the lines of sort of being equivalent, if you will, in terms of relationship to the library board, for example, that you're, that kind of, of, of relationship with the city?
Thank you for the question. I think that's open for exploration. I don't want to presume that we want to be just like the library or just like any of the other organizations that have that relationship with you. I think there's a possibility to create the right kind of relationship, and I'm very excited about having those conversations and seeing what it might be. I think, as was mentioned, we don't want to be a department. We don't want to be, you know, in any way kind of a burden to you. We really wanted to present that in this relationship, we are contributing and enhancing what, what the city programs can do in, in a way that, that overlaps and, and crosses the mandate of the McLaren and leverages our mandate as well. So, so I think, I think maybe it might be a new version of what a service, I mean, we could come, these are, these are unique times, right? I mean, I think there's lots of opportunity to create something new and, and figure out the right kind of synergy and relationship between, between the McLaren and the city.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think that you certainly don't want to be a department. And, and I think that some sort of relationship. When do you, when do you foresee being able to come back to us and, and ask for money but relationship and, and give us a strategy and, and the view forward? Do you have a timing on that?
Soon. Hopefully before the end of the year. I would love to be able to do that. I think we have some work to do ourselves, as well as, you know, we won't be going into the full-throttle strategic planning process yet, but we certainly are in process and having multiple conversations with different community groups and members to try and get a feel. And I'm in a conversation with Stephanie about, and Amanda about where we can connect in. So maybe I would say probably in the fall, be able to come back with a, with sort of a, whether it's a full-throttle business plan at that point, I don't know, but certainly a, a, a report on sort of where things are landing and, and better numbers or better represented numbers.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Reetma. Counsel McCann.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Ward. I may repeat some of my questions that some of the councils have already asked, but I just want to get a visual and get some clarity. Tonight, before you presented, what was your outcome for tonight? What was your, what was your positive outcome from tonight? What were, what were you looking forward to achieve tonight? Mike or Lisa, either one of you?
Just to share, to share, sort of as, as Counselor Harris mentioned, the McLaren has gone through some challenges over the last two years. We wanted to share with city council sort of what we've done to stabilize that and to bring us back into sort of a, a stable operation to be able to plan and move forward. So we wanted to share that, and we wanted to put it on your radar, that, that we support the recommendation that came out of the report that, that council around their, around the Arts Investment Fund, that, that we do look at a new relationship with the McLaren. And for us, that service provider idea was, to us makes sense. And so we just wanted to, to put those things out on the table. We wanted to reassure council that, that we're back and we're stable and ready to, to grow and, and re-engage in the community, and that we really support the recommendation in that report, that, that we be considered somewhat unique from other arts organizations in the, in the community, and that we work towards a different type of, of relationship.
I want to take a shot. Thank you for the thoughtful question, Counsel McCann. So I, I don't work for the McLaren, and I, all my time is volunteer for the last five years on the board and three years as chair. And I, this may be my last year serving as chair. We've got 21, or 23 interested people to join our board, and it's been a lot. We went out to the public and got some pretty interesting folks. So I, I don't know if I'll be here in the fall. I'll be in the stands encouraging, encouraging whoever is in my place. But if, if I am here, then I fail to, fail to myself. I met you in, in 2019, and I, we're back in sort of the same place. My, my outcome is, is really that I want to see this organization in a more stable place. It wasn't in a stable place in 2019, and it's, and, and then we went through the pandemic, and it was one of the most difficult periods to be a board chair or a board member or a director. And I know that I, I could be, I could be any not-for-profit up here saying the exact same thing. I'm not saying we're anything special, but what we've showing, what we're showing here is, is actual 2019 numbers of, of different budgets of different arts organizations. However you want to interpret those numbers, that's what an art center costs, and that's what municipal support looks like for, for art centers, however you interpret it. So I, you know, if, if there's anything I can impart on, on council, it's just, you know, have, have a look. If, if, if the arts in, in, in this community and the things we're doing across the road mean something, then let's, let's work together and just kind of raise this, this ship a little bit so I can ride it and then kind of walk away and feel like everything's going to be fine. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for that. And because of time, we spent a lot of time on this. I mean, I do have some personal perspective, and I do have some business perspective. Is this something you'd be interested in hearing? So I think it's obvious that council chambers, this council, this council chamber and the council members around understand that this is a very special spot in the city of Barry. And I think it's very special for a lot of people. So I think that you're really set up for a win-win-win here. Everybody wants to see this succeed. And some of my personal perspectives with the McLaren have been very positive. I mean, I sat on the board for four years, and I look at some of your charities like the Van Gogh. I must have sent tens of, tens, tens of people, families down to the Van Gogh, and everyone called me up shocked at how amazing and what a great experience they had and their children had, right? You know, the Battle of the Bands, obviously is a nice moneymaker that's outside of the McLaren. I mean, McLaren runs it, but it's outside of the facility, which I think that's, that's a good moneymaker for yourselves. Off the Hook, as Counsel Morales mentioned, is a huge success, right? I've had paintings in my house, you know, that you get for very little money. You're probably 10 times that, and I think people would still go for it. And I'm a little sad to see that I started a, a charity event at the McLaren called the Speakeasy. Is that still running, or is that?
Right up to the, to the pandemic, and we haven't had it. That's normally in October, so stay tuned.
Right by your birthday, right?
Yeah.
October 10th, yeah. And, and so, you know, so McLaren has a nice spot in my, my heart, and I'm glad the Speakeasy is still moving on. I think there's a lot of community engagement. And I guess maybe, you know, next steps move forward, you know, whenever I enter into a, a new business case or a new business model or start up a new business, something always echoes in the back of my brain. It's that when your vision is clear, so will your results. And I really just want to give you my personal perspective, coming back to council, that I think would set you up for a great success. Because everybody in this room wants to see this succeed, and I've done quite a bit of networking with other businesses outside of Barry that have just moved into Barry, and they all talk about the arts. Because other cities demand that money goes towards the arts. And I really think that if you put yourself into two or three more gears, you'd actually get what you want, because I think it's what the community wants. And that's maybe spending more money and getting more public art, getting more oxygen into the McLaren. And that's from outside companies coming in, ideally builders. So I just want to give you the business perspective that they want it, okay? And so I guess next steps, I think Counsel Reetma had mentioned what your next steps are. I just think that the city of Barry has a lot of loose ends. Like, we just had girls who win the basketball tournament. Last week, we had the, the Sharks who came second in a provincial tournament that is a global tournament, right? And I think there's some opportunities that you could really hit where we kind of just do the front end. There's a back end where you could take an opportunity, you could really celebrate that in another, in another festival type of venue. I got lots of ideas, I'm sure so does a lot of people. The problem probably isn't the ideas, it's actually implementing the ideas, which I understand as well, too. So I guess coming back, I would just look deep, and this is once again my personal perspective. Barry is such a unique place. There's no city like it. And I think you coming back with a plan that is unique to the McLaren and really striking hard on what separates Barry from any, any other community here in, in Ontario. We should be the center of such a big region, past Simcoe, that you could really draw and really create some synergies and create something much larger where you won't need to have maybe a public funding, but maybe have a temporary public funding to get you there. But your plan, my last words, just make it a good one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCann. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Counsel Natalie Harris?
Thank you. I have a really quick question to Mike. I'm sure maybe there's a pause on the Sargent Truck. I love it, the art program with schools. Is that still happening? Is there a plan in the future? I know the pandemic probably derailed that a bit.
Thanks so much for the question, Counsel Harris. So that's been a big success for councilors that haven't seen it. The Sargent Trucks, I worked for the Sargent Company, and our trucks get a canvas, canvases every year by local high schools. And it's been a, my, our CEO, Scott Elliott, and I came up with the idea about 10 years ago, and we've been working with the McLaren on that. The last couple of years have been really unsuccessful. We tried to mount it, we had the competition, and then we'd get hit with a shutdown because we normally do it right around the end of, right around the peak of flu season. So we were into two separate shutdowns, and it was really unfortunate, but I'm, I'm hoping next spring we should see it start up again. Thanks for the question.
I look forward to seeing it. It's great.
Okay, thank you. No other questions? I just had a couple of quick ones. Staniels, I assume you've probably talked to your colleagues across the province. I'm just curious how the, how galleries in general have fared because of the pandemic over the last two years. I'm sure they've all suffered. Are they, you know, at death's door, some of them, or have they survived? Or what's the status of it?
Thank you for the question, Deputy Mayor Ward. The, across the sector is challenging. There's a number of, of probably smaller community galleries have not made it through the pandemic. Most galleries are running a deficit and expect to run a deficit for the next three years to be able to pull out of it. There's been a lot of disruption around scheduling and booking of, of programs because they, there's the domino effect, so the whole programming and logistical aspects of running the gallery has, have been really disruptive for a lot of galleries. And I'm a board member of the Ontario Association of Art Galleries, and at the last board meeting, it was very clear that the public galleries are looking at a three-year stabilization plan in most, not the, not the McLaren, but a large number of them are running deficits for those three years, just as they're building up their, their fundraising base again. Because not just the shutdown, but everything has shifted. And so everybody's recalibrating to what that new environment is and what are the, the notion of being able to go back to things and just re-insert them? It's not realistic in every case, so it's bringing a lot of challenges.
Okay, thank you. My next question. Okay, thank you. My next question was, you kind of talked about how, you know, Kingston has a gallery that's owned by the university or on the university property anyways and Guelph's kind of a hybrid. And so is there a standard model across the province on how municipal art galleries are run? Or is it kind of everyone's different?
Everyone is different. There's no standard model. And everything from, I mean, I could talk about the ones I put up there and that's why they were moved out of the, those calculations weren't in there because they're all very different. Our gallery at Peterborough is really unique and they're actually just going through, having a consultant look at what can their new relationship be because what their relationship and model isn't working any anymore for them. But they're, no, my quick answer, no. No standard. I mean, even Guelph, that they have three solid equal partners and that the school board is one of those partners and is very unique. So.
Okay. See no other questions. Thank you very much, Mr. McMillan and Miss Daniels, for your time tonight. We appreciate it and we look forward to seeing you again. Good night. Okay, we are now at inquiries. Are there inquiries, staff? Council McCann?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Ward. I want to talk about the protest that we had on Wednesday with, I believe it was the McLaren Art Center. And maybe is it for you? Sorry, do you have a question?
No, go ahead.
And maybe if I could, through you, Acting Mayor Ward, talk to Michael Prowse?
Sure, I can ask a question.
Thank you. Michael, I would, we had a discussion earlier. I wanted to expand upon it, that we had a demonstration with, I think, 150 tents put on by the Busby Center. And I believe the protest was an awareness because they were losing their funding in June. They were all in a hotel up by the Bayfield Mall on Bayfield Street. And the fear was that the funding wouldn't come in again or they wouldn't have a place to stay. And I believe now the information has come that the Busby now is opened up and other areas are opened up. Is that correct?
Mr. Prowse?
Through you, Acting Mayor Ward, to Council McCann. That's generally correct, Council McCann. I think in fairness, there was uncertainty around the funding for the province. The service providers in the county which provides the service as the service manager were aware that the funding was to end as per the province. The complication was that the service providers, such as the Busby, et cetera, hadn't yet got clearance from the health unit on what the protocols could or should be as it relates to returning their clients to those buildings. With uncertainty around that, they weren't even sure that they could open up their facilities in a meaningful way. So at the time of the protest, those were the circumstances, yes.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I should start off by saying I slightly apologize for not giving you the heads up because I know you're just kind of going off through your head here for detail. So I don't expect complete detail. But I have to tell you that I found that for the protests, I'll use the word interesting and it loses sense, but I had some questions on where the funding came from for the tents. You know, I'm not sure what the tents cost, but I heard somewhere between 200 bucks a tent at $150. That's a lot of money and I want to know if it came from taxpayers, but we're obviously not a part of their financials. And I'm not sure there's any way of getting that back, but that would be information that I would like to have back if there could be some inquiries put on by the city.
Through you, Acting Mayor Ward, to Council McCann. We'd be happy to inquire both of the county and of the service providers. We, as you mentioned, don't have details as to the financials of the, how they got tents or who paid for the tents or whether they donated, et cetera. We'd be happy to make that request and see if we can relay that back to council.
And I do appreciate that and understand, yes, this is their business and not ours. But we do fund them. So I do believe that we have an opinion. Then it brought me to another piece of information. And this may be open to anybody in the room may have the answer. Is it true that the Busby is handing out tents to anybody who wants a tent?
Mr. Prowse?
Through you, Acting Mayor Ward, to Council McCann. I would not want to swear on a stack of bibles. It is my understanding that some of the service groups are providing tents, camping gear, et cetera. I wouldn't want to definitively say the Busby is providing it or not. My understanding is there are some of the groups that are providing it, but we could also ask for that information as well.
Yeah, maybe this is more of a comment, but my family and I like to do lots of hiking. We've done quite a bit of hiking in Barry. We were in Sunnydale Park a few weeks ago, up at Tiffin. We were Wilkins Park and Milligan's Pond. And I see so many of these tents just discarded inside of our forest. And I understand this is a very sensitive issue and I'm definitely sensitive, but we need to have an action plan that removes these, makes it safe. Because I tell you that I had a little dinosaur with me and she was very frightened about seeing this tent inside the forest. And it just made my mind kind of go further down the rabbit's hole. Well, who's paying for the cleanup? Obviously, that's the City of Barry, correct?
Council McCann, easy for me to say, Council McCann, that's correct. Generally, when municipal law enforcement receives a complaint about camping in our parks, they will respond. Eventually, they leave a notice on the tents, my understanding. They will return. If indeed it is either abandoned or occupied, they will deal with the occupants and then operations will often come through and have to remove the tent and dispose of it.
Yeah, it does concern me. I had a conversation with Kira Brooks, with the police this week, or last week, sorry. And I understand that, you know, the homeless, known homeless that we have in their downtown Barry has gone from 25 to 125 known common homeless, which is tragic. And we need to take some action, right? There needs to be an action plan that we have forward here. And I just really wanted to maybe talk to council, like the McLaren, which is me planting a seed. There's no action plan that I have tonight, but I just wanted to plant a seed to say, as a council, I think we need to have this discussion together as a group and understand the perspective that many of our residents have towards walking in, hiking in our trails and seeing tents, knowing that they're giving away free from the Busby and it costs the taxpayer more money, having an influx of, I think, 400% more homeless in or downtown.
Council McCann, this is inquiry, so.
Sure. You know what, Deputy Mayor Ward, I appreciate that. I'll end by maybe just ask a question about bylaw, right? So I understand that the Busby informed the police and bylaw for this peaceful protest. And could you just maybe give the perspective from the city on how that was handled by the city? And if it happens again, what we're prepared to do?
Through you, Acting Mayor Ward, to Council McCann and Ms. Cook can chime in if I miss this. We do indeed have a bylaw against the use of tents in our waterfront parks. This, as it was a protest, the police are the lead as they have been on other protests. And in conjunction with municipal law enforcement, once they understood the nature of the protest, that it was intended to be peaceful, the timeframe was intended to be short, designed to be an awareness campaign. They monitored the situation, but no action was taken, even though technically it is in violation of our municipal bylaw crime.
Mr. Prowse, thank you for your insight. And Deputy Mayor Ward, or sorry, Acting Mayor Ward, thank you for a little bit lenience. And council, I just think that we should really have this conversation sometime in your future. Thank you.
Any other inquiries? Okay, Counselor Owen and then Counselor Harvey.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Ward. I actually have an inquiry based on the topic that was just being discussed around the reason for the demonstration by the Busby Center and Elizabeth Frye. So, Mr. Prowse, can you clarify? Because the protest was around the federal and provincial funding for the motel voucher program that's running out at the end of June 30th. Did you just respond that that funding has been renewed past that date? Or no?
Mr. Prowse?
Through you, Acting Mayor Ward, to Counsel Owen. No, Counsel Owen, I apologize if that was the impression I left. What I had indicated was we've got, the county got indication that the funding was to end in June, which is, I think, has been fairly broadly broadcast. The added complication was the fact that the health unit had not yet given the service providers any sort of indication as to what sort of capacity they could take on or expect. So you had these two conflicting timelines with the ending of the funding and reduced capacity. Around the time of the protest, the health unit gave some additional direction to the service providers, which allowed them to virtually go back to what I understand to be their original capacity, which I think avoided the worst of the situation, although they are still short, I think, available space for some of the additional homeless.
Okay, thank you so much for clarifying that. I think that's really important to clarify that the funding has not been extended past June 30th. And I think that was the point of the whole protest, was that we could see people camping in tents out of necessity. And we all agree that everyone deserves a safe, affordable place to call home and shouldn't have to resort to that.
Council Harvey?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Ward. Question for Mr. Ferrari. Just wondering if he can provide an update when it comes to street cleaning. I've had a few inquiries. Just kind of curious how many more weeks before the first pass-through will take. And then obviously, we know that it goes through a second bypass after that.
Mr. Frye?
Deputy Mayor Ward and members of council, we started street sweeping mid-April this year. And it's usually an eight to 10-week process. So typically, we'll get finished up by June. So the process, as Counsel Harvey indicated, first we'll go through with the flusher trucks. The first pass will go through with a mechanical sweeper. That picks up some of the real heavy debris. And then we follow that up with a vacuum sweeper. So the sweeper may go by one time and you'll see a little bit of debris still left behind, some sand. That's normal. We'll be back to pick that up. What I would encourage people to do this year, we've updated our website. So you can actually go on the website and you can tell when the sweepers are going to be around. So we usually only update it about two weeks before they get there because we don't want to get too ahead of ourselves. So if you look on the map on the street sweeping website, it'll indicate when the sweepers are coming around your area. If you are missed or if there's a car parked on the street, just please call us back. After we're done the first and second rounds, we will go back and pick up any streets we missed as well. So I hope that answers your question.
Council Harvey, is that? Any other inquiries?
Thank you.
See none. We'll move on to announcements. Does anybody have any announcements? Counselor Natalie Harris?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Ward. Just a quick announcement that on May 18th, so this Wednesday at 7:00, myself, Counselor Harvey and you, Acting Mayor Ward, will be hosting our town hall for Ward Six and Ward Seven. So you can go to the website, Barry website, and register to watch. You can also submit questions ahead of time as well. So we hope to see you there.
Thank you. Counselor Rittma?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Ward. I have two announcements. First of all, also on this Wednesday night, there is a virtual meeting on the vegetation management on the North Shore Trail, which is largely in Ward One, but it certainly affects all the city. So check the city's website and connect up with that initiative. The second one is that on June 1st, that's at 5:00, we have a neighborhood meeting. The neighborhood meeting is to talk about a proposed development at 114 Blake Street, which is the former Simcoe Motel property. And everybody's invited and you're, you can connect again through the city's website and register for that. Thanks.
Okay. Any other announcements? Counselor Owen?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Ward. Tomorrow evening, we have planning committee at 7:00 PM. And there are two public meetings for proposed developments in Ward Two on the agenda. The first is the proposed development on the former Barry Central Lands on Bradford Street. And the second public meeting is for proposed development at 129 Collier Street. So I invite residents from Ward Two and all across the city to register to attend by going to the Ward Two Developments page on the City of Barry website. And you have an opportunity to have your voice heard and make your, and bring up your concerns or questions at that time. So again, that's tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM, Planning Committee. Two proposed developments in Ward Two, Barry Central Lands and 129 Collier Street. Hope to see you there.
Counselor Thompson?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Ward. I just didn't want to let this pass. On Saturday, we had our community garden party. And I just wanted to thank the organization. Staff were there and also Jenna from Urban Pantry and Lynn from CMHA. And it was a great success. There must have been over 150 people. And I just want to thank them and it was, I didn't want it to go without anything said. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you. My first announcement is that I actually went down to the protest last week at the waterfront and spoke to the people there. And I think it's important to know that, I didn't ask them where the tents came from or where they came, but I think it's important to note that, I think it was a very effective protest. It was very short-lived, very well organized. They had taken it down by lunchtime. And I think it's important to note that they actually don't want people living in tents. The whole idea was to highlight what was going to happen at the end of June if no places found for people that they were going to be living in tents. So I don't think they were, they're not encouraging people to live in tents. They actually don't want people living in tents. But they were showing us the reality of what was going to happen if they did not get more funding. Anyways, I'll go on to the regular announcements now. Okay, I've read, I've got, okay, I've got some announcements here. I proclaim May 17th tomorrow, as International Day Against Homophobia, Transphobia and Biphobia. And I'll be raising a flag in the courtyard at 1:00. Economic Development Week runs from May 9th to May 13th and is an opportunity to learn more about economic development and the impact it has on the community. Follow Invest Barry on Twitter and LinkedIn or visit investberry.ca for more information. The City of Barry is conducting its second annual business and employer data survey. Door-to-door outreach has started at workplaces located in the industrial and commercial zones across the city to gather data to help update the city's online business and employer data directory. Businesses can also self-supply their data through an online form at buildingberry.ca/businessdata survey. Friday drop-ins are returning to the youth center located at the Piggy Hill Team Community Center at 171 Mapleton Avenue. Youth aged 11 to 17 can drop into the youth center every Friday from 3:30 to 8:30. The youth center provides space and equipment to explore your passions alongside your peers, guided by our experienced team of inspiring and caring staff members. For more information, visit barry.ca/dropins. There are summer jobs still available with the City of Barry for students. We're looking for students at least 16 years old or turning 16 this year to become summer fund trailer leaders and summer fund trailer conveners. Apply via recreation career opportunities at barry.ca/jobops. The city's residential info construction, the Good Neighbor Guide, contains best practices to follow when undertaking a construction project in your home. These projects may include home demolitions, reconstruction or significant renovations, additions to existing homes. Following a few simple guidelines can help a project proceed with minimal disruptions to your neighbors. Visit residential building permits via barry.ca/building to access the guide and for full information about residential permits for construction projects. The city wants to hear from residents on preferences regarding the preferred approach to maintaining the North Shore Trail. An online Zoom format Public Information Center will be held this Wednesday from 7:00 till 9:00 PM. Comments on the plan will be accepted until June 3rd. Visit buildingberry.ca/northshoretrail for more information or to register for the public information session. And finally, Huronier Road will be closed from Big Bay Point to Ellis Drive from May 16th today to May 30th as part of the Big Bay Point Road Transportation Improvement Project, which started last August. Drivers can expect delays and detours. This project is expected to be completed by the end of the year. For more details on the project, visit Big Bay Point Road Construction Improvement Page at barry.ca/roadwork. And Counselor Congal, did you have something?
Thank you for the opportunity. Yes, it's a reminder that on the topic of student hours and opportunities, we are welcoming gardeners who would like to volunteer in the Janus Laken Community Garden. And if you are a student looking for volunteers, to please contact myself or send an email to thejanuslakencommunitygarden@gmail.com. And we have the pleasure of welcoming the Cubs in. We have some events where we do have visitors from different retirement homes coming into the garden as well as tellers and others. So if you're aware of a community group that would like to experience gardening or introduce it to their members, please do reach out and we welcome you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Congal. Counsel McCann, you have something else?
You know, I've got a very light announcement that it kind of affects the whole city. About maybe five years ago, I brought a project About maybe, uh, five years ago, I brought a, uh, a project to the city of Barry called Bee City. And it's actually to promote pollinators and the mayor, uh, council all supported with, with a high level of enthusiasm. Well, there was a, uh, there was a, um, a Zoom call today, a national Zoom call put on by Climate Caucus. Uh, and funny enough, two of the organizers actually were from Barry, uh, and one worked for the city of Barry, uh, which was, you know, interesting. And, uh, Bee City actually picked the Barry Ontario and myself to actually represent how you become a bee city, uh, and in her words, because she thinks Barry is the best city for the bee city. So, uh, I'm not sure how far down the line I was, but I'll, I'll, I'll pretend that I was number one. And, uh, and there's a lot of questions about, uh, about, uh, other cities getting involved and becoming a bee city. And they asked, you know, about maybe becoming a bird city and how we would do that. And I answered a question, I think, uh, very quickly, I said, you know, the mayor put me on a committee that I really felt he didn't like me because it was nothing to do with what I was in my wheel well. Uh, and, uh, and then Shelley from Bee City, uh, asked me just to, uh, to take five minutes, I took more than five minutes and got engaged because I strictly, I honestly believe that organizations, that product services is one element to success. But the biggest part of success are the people, uh, that help run the organization. And then they asked me, that's why I said, I probably got a very fast, uh, unanimous vote yes, because people probably, uh, understood that this was not my wheelhouse, but I was so enthusiastic about Barry becoming the 30th bee city. Then they started asking me about Barry becoming a bird city. And I said, well, you know what? There's the 180. Because we have a councillor that, uh, does the research, that is in love with the bird city. We've actually got the designation that's going to happen today already. And they all were like shocked and relieved, uh, and not relieved, but shocked. And I just said, here's two aspects. A councillor doesn't really fit his wheel well, but a councillor that absolutely fits the wheel well. And I think as a council member, if it's, if it passes Kangal, then to me it's going to pass my mark. So I want to say thank you. But then they asked about all the initiatives that, uh, that we've done. And for some reason they thought I did all these initiatives. And I just said, no, we've got a very progressive, we've got an excellent staff that actually forward thinks, I mean, I've said this before, that Barry, I believe, is like a teenager and it's growing into its twenties and thirties. And the city of Barry can take risks and be very flexible and actually can obtain some real fun things that help pollinators, that help us grow as a city. And so I just wanted to share that with everybody, that Kangal, you were on the national call today and I appreciate you and, and what you do for, for the environment and, uh, this council, having a forward-thinking mind and obviously staff. And I would have to end this, uh, once again, really thanking Rebecca James Reid's, uh, team, uh, because they asked me to do the Zoom call and I said, okay. And before I hung up, I was calling Rebecca, hey, can you help me with this presentation? And they just did not a good job. They did a great job. And I'm telling you, uh, Markham is actually contacting myself because they want to become the next bee city and, uh, they want to know how we did it. So for what it's worth, thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor McCann. I'm always afraid to ask, any other announcements? Okay. Seen none, we'll move on to bylaws. Councillor Kangal?
Thank you. Moved by myself and seconded by councillor Thompson, that leave be granted to introduce the following bills and these bills be read the first, second and third time this day and finally passed. Bills 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48 and 49.
Moved by councillor Kangal, seconded by councillor Thompson, that leave be granted to introduce the following bills and these bills be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed. Bills 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48 and 49. Any comments or questions? Seen none, all in favor? Against? It is carried. Councillor Kangal, confirmation bylaw?
Thank you. Moved by myself and seconded by councillor Thompson, the confirmation bylaw that leave be granted to introduce the following bill and this bill be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed. Bill 50.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Kangal, seconded by councillor Thompson, that leave be granted to introduce the following bill and this bill be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed. Bill 50. Any comments or questions? Seen none, all in favor? Against? It is carried. And I have a motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor Jim Harris, seconded by councillor Morales. We're over, thank you. Thank you everybody, thank you staff.
Thanks, good night.